And Betsy, you're absent.
I have spoken with both of them. They are out of town.
Have the board members had an opportunity to review the minutes from December 9?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you. There are no committee reports tonight, but while I have us in the front end of the agenda, I did want to just take a moment. We had some snacks in the other room, but I wanted to take a moment and just, on behalf of the district and all of our students, faculty, staff, community, just really say thank you for the jobs you do. You give time that the community members see and you give a lot of time that the community members don't see, reading emails, looking over documents, thinking about things in closed session meetings or in lengthy regular meetings. I really do appreciate it. It's an honor for me to work with each of you and, you know, I think we're very fortunate. I've been to many other districts and we have a board that really works well together, so I just wanted to, for recognition, want to thank you people for the job you do. And there's your certificate. And Sue, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
There you go. I had to switch the order because you switched.
Oh.
Thank you. I did not predict that.
Yeah.
And thank you. And Sarah, thank you. And Greg and Betsy will get theirs.
We'll make it.
Well, it's not that much.
Okay, moving on to staff and student reports to the board. Candace spoke with me today, the BST students who were going to be here tonight to do a short presentation on programming and code writing. They have created games in their class. We're unable to be here, so we're postponing that student presentation and staff comment to the next meeting in February, so looking forward to that. Josie Draper will be here. However, she's in a parent meeting right now, so she said if she wasn't here right toward the beginning, maybe we'll hear from her during the closing guest and public comment towards the latter part of the meeting. So now we're to the principals' report.
All right. This month at Rotary, how we honored Alexis Carpenter. She and her parents, Rich and Barbara, both attended. And she plans to attend the community college. She wants to play softball. And then she plans to transfer to a four-year college. She wants to teach special ed. So as you guys all know, that's near and dear to my heart. State Police Officer Corey Hebner was here last Friday. He presented to our seventh through 12th grade students. He spent an hour's worth of time with each class. He talked about cyberbullying and internet safety. Oh, okay. And it was very well received by the students and by the staff. I think a lot of the kids were very shocked by what he showed them. He showed them a lot about digital footprints and how if you put a picture up there, how it does stay in Instagram even though it disappears, how they can get into your phone and find it. Talked a lot about stalking and sending selfies and different things like that. And I think a lot of the kids heard it. I hope they did. I got a lot of good comments from the kids and some of it was tough to hear and tough to watch, but it was good stuff. The bullying stuff was pretty intense. So I think it was very good. Glad he was here. Finalized the first rounds of the evaluations. I'm using a rubric. That is one of the four state-approved rubrics along with our evaluation that's in the contract. And Ben and I are working to develop a list of evidence so the teachers can provide that in addition to their evaluation. Our counselor, Darcy Noms, is working with NMC. She has a field trip set up for next week. Eleven of our seniors and all of our juniors are going to go to NMC for the day. They're going to be able to see graphic design, culinary, and a technology program in three different groups. And they're also going to get lunch. So it's going to be an exciting field trip. We held our second meeting to transition from Target to Schoolwide. And Lisa Hooger, Hyde, and I are working to put together a Trojan newsletter. Want to send out a mailer to the public and go home with your port cards at the end of the month. And we've gotten a lot of good information from staff and everybody in the buildings. And so we're excited to have our first edition out by the end of January. So hopefully it posts. That's it.
And Shelley, thank you. I must apologize. When I went to print it, the copier either jammed or is out of paper or something. It's not sitting down there. So I do have Shelley's principals' report, or will have it, but don't have it right now.
Oh, okay.
It's unlocked. If you want to make copies, you can.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I printed it, but it didn't spit out in the printer.
Let me go do it, just in case it's out of paper.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Shelley, I just want to say I really appreciate the fact that you're working to showcase some of the things that we're doing and the fact that you're sending it out to everybody. Are you going to do that through the mail or post?
Yeah, that's the intent. And I'd like to do it every quarter. So Ben will have a piece and I'll have a piece. And then we'll draw from all the staff. And we have a really good response from all the staff, sending pictures and sending things that we've done. So to try and reach even more. I know we're doing a great job with Facebook and stuff.
Well, thanks for following through on that, because a lot of people don't do Facebook or any computer things, but, you know, 90% of people in town at least shop once a week at the grocery store.
That's right. And we're thankful for our partnership, you know, with the CL News and with the Edgeham County News as well. But this is one more way to, you know, throw in a lot more pictures and do some things like that. So pretty exciting.
Thank you.
Yep. And I, just to pass along to the teachers and stuff, too, those that have put some stuff on the Facebook page, you know, I really appreciated it because I had somebody that, you know, approached me and said, "We don't do anything." And I immediately pulled three things off the Facebook and shared them.
Good.
And everybody was like, "Oh."
I bet stuff.
Trying to get into classes and take more pictures.
Yeah.
And good stuff. And so throwing them up there.
Good. I'm glad.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Michelle, for printing it. Have board members had an opportunity to review expenditure log in December of the bill's report?
We have.
Okay.
You know what, Aiden, this is just a general question and probably a silly question, but everything that's on those reports is pre-approved by you, correct? I mean, you guys have already looked at it by the time we get it.
Yes.
And you've already approved it, and it's all good at that point?
Yes. To say everything's been pre-approved, many of those things just roll over month to month. But the things that do require administrative approval have either been approved by Shelley or business office takes care of a payment for an electric bill.
Okay, so before we see it, it has been approved.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Somebody has put the okay on it, whether it's me or Shelley or Michelle.
Thank you.
I did.
I'll take a motion to approve the bill.
I'll make my motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tracy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. That brings us to the guest and public comment part.
I'd just like to thank each and every one of you for what you do, for our schools and the district. I have two children in school, and I really appreciate y'all's efforts, wholeheartedly as a parent.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's good.
Cindy?
Nope.
Sorry. Had to do that. You always sit so quiet.
I do, don't I? I try to.
Okay. That brings us to our first action item. We have quite a few tonight. As I said at the start of the meeting, this is the organizational meeting of the board that the board does every January, so we'll have quite a few process motions. And so the first one is going to be for the board to entertain a motion to name or select their board president for the 2014 session of Central Lake Public Schools Board of Education. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, should I just read it or?
You can just insert a name into that blank.
Okay. I would like you to consider a motion to support Sue as our board president for the 2014 session of the Central Lake Public School Board of Education.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let me do a roll call. Keith was an aye. Okay. Sue?
Aye.
Mel?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
And Sarah?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sue, you are selected as president for A&amp;B Year. Congratulations, Sue.
Thank you.
And at this time, I am off the hook, and you are back on the hook to conduct the remainder of the meeting. And I think that starts on the top of the next page.
Okay. Do we do the committees before we do the?
You can do the committees at any time. You can do them now. You could do them at the end of the agenda items.
I think I'll wait and do the committees at the end of the agenda items. So I would consider a motion to support a candidate for vice president. Do we have any nominations? Now, I have to say, we have two people who are not here, Betsy and Greg. And I have spoken with both of them this week. And Greg would like to be considered again as vice president. So I think that, you know, that's something we could look at, too, in hustlers and other candidates, too. If not, I will make the motion to have Greg be the vice president for the 19, I thought the next school year. All those in favor? Do we do a roll call vote again?
Hmm.
Okay, Sarah?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Melanie?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. So Greg is our new vice president. I did tell him we're going to nominate him for all sorts of things.
Yeah.
Because he's put him on every committee. Right, every committee, yeah, you know. Make a few new committees that he could be personally in charge of, so. The position of treasurer for the Central Lake Board of Education, I would consider a motion to nominate someone for treasurer. That position was held by Melanie for the last year, and in talking with her, she has graciously volunteered to do that again, so.
Was that you, Keith?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll support.
Okay.
Don't get in on it, Melanie.
Sarah?
Aye.
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 And myself is also in favor of that. So Melanie, happy treasurer.
Happy coming.
Yeah. A motion to support the selection for the position of secretary. And I have spoken with Sarah this weekend. She has said that she would be willing to do that again for another year.
And I'd definitely make that motion.
Because I don't want it.
After I have support, I'll support.
Okay.
Who supported in here?
Melanie.
All right.
The two closest to me that know I'd be against it.
Yeah. I am also in favor. And Melanie?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
And Sarah?
Aye.
All right, then we have our new secretary.
Sarah, I want to thank you for the copious notes you take, because I know in the fall when you were unable to be here for some meetings, we probably took miniscule notes, so.
Yes, and I appreciate everybody living without me for a little bit.
Well, we appreciate the fact you're back. So I would consider a motion to affirm Alden State Bank in Central Lake, Michigan, as the district's bank deposit location for all district accounts.
Motion.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. I will consider a motion to reaffirm check signatories as board presidents, Sue Wagner and Treasurer Melanie Ackert.
I make that motion?
Second.
I have a motion in support.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
I think we do.
Motion is carried.
All those are counting.
I would consider a motion to affirm, I, is it Trun?
I've heard it say, pronounced Trun, but I've actually heard an individual works there say Trun.
T-H-R-U-N, as the district's legal counsel.
Okay, I support.
All right, so Melanie and Tracy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion is carried. I would consider a motion to designate communication responsibilities to the superintendent. This motion will place the responsibility of posting board meeting notices on the superintendent or his designating for that current time.
Motion.
Support.
Okay, thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Trace, could you say more?
Sarah.
I didn't notice.
Motion is carried. I would consider a motion to designate election responsibilities to the superintendent, their designee, and the board secretary. This motion ensures that all election responsibilities will be handled by the officers of the superintendent and will be signed by the board secretary.
Motion.
Thank you, Tracy. Melanie? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion is carried. I would consider a motion to authorize the superintendent and business office manager as the investment officers for the district. This motion assigns the responsibility of managing the district's funds and accounts to the superintendent and the business office manager. Movement and/or change to any of funds always require the action of the board in a public meeting.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right. Boy, we whipped through that tonight.
I would have lost the bet had someone said this will be, to this point in the meeting, in less than 20 minutes.
Hey, the superintendent's reported.
Here we go.
Who goes in those 40?
Wait, you have to let me get the meeting.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Well, it's going to be active yet.
No wonder you said that.
Yeah. Well, I don't have the list with me.
I think I, I think I.
But each person who was on a committee, and I did that because Betsy and Greg are not here, but everybody volunteered to be on the same committee again.
Okay.
Sarah, do you remember which ones who were on?
I am on the curriculum.
Okay. I think the continuity of having the same people on the same committees is good. And also, as public information, we have gone to what they call Committee of the Whole, the COW. But Committee of the Whole means that if it's something that is pertinent to everybody and we're going to have to repeat everything two or three times, we will just meet as a committee of the whole, and it will be a posted meeting that the public will be able to attend if you want to. So Sarah on curriculum. Tracy?
On finance and personnel.
Melanie?
I was finance and personnel and maybe one other, but.
I think you were.
I think curriculum.
We have the list down in the desk office, so we can confirm.
Okay.
The left side, I'm a nun, so we can go with that.
Keith?
I might be. I never had any of that.
Okay, but I think you came in on curriculum and building and grounds, didn't you? And I think Greg was on building and grounds.
Yeah.
And I think I was on finance.
And.
I think Betsy was on building and grounds.
Yeah, she was.
Betsy and I, I think, on curriculum.
Yeah, and Betsy was on building and grounds, too.
Okay. Well, that's pretty flexible. It's not so, you know, it's an informative thing, so we can change it or whatever if we need to.
And I know that curriculum committee's been fairly inactive, so perhaps we should set a goal to have at least one.
I think so.
At some point.
Well, and I think.
Didn't it mean a month ago? Or was it two months ago?
Two months ago.
Two months ago.
So look at schedule.
Okay, so I just, I just was absent from that one. Okay, so it's not too bad.
Well, in a way, it's a good thing that we're functioning well enough. We don't need constant committee meetings. I think that's a real advantage, but it's nice that they're there. All right, now the superintendent's report. Sarah's got her watch running.
This actually looks like a very daunting report in length. It's twice the normal length, but it doesn't necessarily mean it'll take that long. The first page entirely is made up of legislative updates, but I'm really only wanting to touch on the ones that I've kind of bolded, because I think they're pretty important for this district and for all others, really. In the last week of 2013, the governor signed four packages of bills and the laws that affect public schools. The first one I did want to mention, which I'm keenly watching and we will post on our website as soon as kind of the blueprint and the phone number have been designated, but he passed Senate Bill 374 into law or signed into law, and that is the okay-to-say system that allows students or other concerned citizens to report anonymous tips on potential school violence via a 24-hour hotline, text message, email, or website. Michigan State Police are charged with housing this system, maintaining the system, operating and staffing the system. As of yet, the phone number that is the hotline has not yet been identified. As soon as it is, we will have, and I'm sure every district will have, a phone number posted on the website. We'll have it inserted in the handbooks and such and explain what that's all about in greater detail, but I think that's an important step for the state and for certainly our district. You can read Senate Bill 442 on your own. I'm not really going to mention limiting judgment levies, but I did want to include it just for your reference. The next one of note, the EpiPen mandate. You, as a school board, can actually fill a prescription by law. First time this has been possible. The governor signed this into law, House Bill 4352, mandates that all student buildings have at least two EpiPens in the building. And the bills require the school board to seek private funds to pay for the cost of these EpiPens. And if the school is unable to secure the funding, it may then submit its cost to MDE for reimbursement. Initially, they do want you to see if you can find local individuals to help with the procurement. I have contacted our school nurse to ask for her assistance in both sourcing the EpiPens, getting a good price on the EpiPens, and then providing some staff training and staff awareness about how to best administer them and use them. They're pretty straightforward.
Is there a thought process on, you know, during games and when this part of the building is locked?
There is, kind of like what we've done with the ice makers. We used to have the problem when after hours, someone, if Cindy wasn't here, someone would have to try and find someone with keys to get to the ice if someone twisted an ankle at a ballgame. We've put now extra ice machines in the gym referee's locker room area. And one thought would be, it stays in the medical kit on the sideline, so to speak, either on the sideline or in the basketball, basketball gym, volleyball gym, or for assemblies or band programs, whatever it might be, and/or locked up in the concession stand where any staff with a key could get to it. So those are things the school nurse will work with Shelley and put on to talk about, you know, how do we keep it secure, but also available. The use is pretty straightforward. They basically look like a pen. They have a cap, and you administer the injection. You can do that through the jeans or through the clothes. I have witnessed, in another state, an individual get excited and do this and ran the needle through his thumbnail and then pass out. That was my assistant principal at a former school who was so excited and nervous about the student who had a bee sting allergy that he EpiPened himself.
Oh, great.
Then we had to look for a second EpiPen, which is probably why they want two. But we will not.
So it's just a one dose?
It's a one dose, right. And so you use it once and it's disposable.
Do you have to have, like, parent permission or anything?
No, no, you work with the school nurse, and we work with our demographics forms. We have on record who has a bee sting allergy, who has an allergy to certain foods. And so you, the school, would actually, or we, the school board, would actually be the holder of the prescription. They don't worry about which student it might be, because it might be a member of the community. It might be someone who's here watching a ballgame. I didn't know this, but they do have a shelf life, I believe, of 90 to 120 days. So you're supposed to check your stock and dispose of them and then get new, you know, about once a quarter, about once a season, basically. So I think that's an important, important thing for us to be aware of. The next bill, I'm not going to mention. You can read about that. Winter weather cancellations due to wind chill. You have a handout that I've attached. I'm not going to read this, because it's quite lengthy, but it defines wind chill, frostbite, hypothermia, how to dress during the cold, which we know a lot about in our community. But it does have a chart on the back, and it talks about old versus new. They've changed the definition on how wind chill was actually determined relatively recently, because for a long time, you know, they calculated it one way. And the new calculation actually makes it a lot harder to get to extremely low wind chill factors. At any rate, that is really what I wanted to focus on. I wanted to talk about the fact that pretty much the entire state canceled school last week, Monday and Tuesday. And most schools south of about Mount Pleasant were also out Wednesday, and quite a few were out Thursday. It really was a statewide event. That statewide event has prompted the governor to sign another law that eases the restriction on the minimum number of school days, which is right now 170. You still have to have 1,098 hours, but he's eased the days restriction to allow districts the flexibility, right, to allow districts the flexibility to add hours to get to the 1,098 on to existing days. So that's a local decision that districts typically have to negotiate with their EAs and their member groups. And so I've scheduled a meeting with Michelle Perkins to talk about that. And also Cindy and I are working with the ISD to determine, do we need to add a day, because we're still okay with respect to our hours. So we're not below the hours requirement, because we had 1,110. We had a cushion of 12 hours, missing the November 15th day, which is the one that we couldn't count. Only took us down to 1,003.5. So we're still above the 1098, but we only have 169 days, though. So the real question is, are we okay, or do we need to make some sort of adjustment? So as soon as we hear back from pupil accounting, and I appreciate Cindy's work on this, we'll have an answer. And then Michelle Perkins and the EA and I will then talk about options. As far as the wind chill, though, the local superintendents in this ISD as well as in the TBA ISD talked and had quite a few conference calls and met as a group. And we've determined, working with the National Weather Service and the emergency managers in the local counties, that the figure of minus 25 is kind of the benchmark at which we ought to consider canceling. Not that it's hard and fast, but typically if you have minus 25, you probably have glazed and iced roads. Obviously, if the temp's that low, it takes usually standing temp of zero or minus five to get down to minus 25 wind chill. Then salt's not going to work. So there's probably a lot of other factors going on that should come into play. So really, minus 25 was kind of the benchmark that was established. And that lengthy report just kind of goes over that for you. I've already kind of touched on the calendar adjustments. I rolled those two into one. Neola Board Policy Meeting will be scheduled soon. I'll be working with the board to schedule the second meeting. We had conducted the first reading a number of weeks ago. That was before the holiday. And we'll need to schedule a January meeting later this month. I'm pretty good on just about any date, but I wanted to bring it up tonight to see, are there any dates that those of you who are here know that simply won't work if you're out of town or?
Tuesdays and Thursdays are my teaching days, so.
Let me write that down. Tuesday.
Yeah, so I restrict it on those.
Okay. So those are bad for Saturday.
I would prefer not to sports basketball game nights.
I understand.
I think if we could have it on Monday, you know, it would be.
Monday's probably the best.
The best day.
Well, why don't I email the board, and then I'll target a Monday a couple of weeks from now, and we'll see how that Monday looks. Monday, okay.
And the possibility of maybe a little earlier, too. I don't know if that works for everybody. I'd ask her five, but maybe a little earlier if that could be an option.
Um, Mondays, I can do by thirty.
Okay. Sarah, that will work?
I can do earlier, yeah.
Okay. All right, I will-
My schedule's pretty tight, though.
I'll send an email just to Michelle. Thank you, thank you. I've got a bit of good news. I was on the phone earlier or late last week and then it confirmed again today with Phil Secretary. I didn't talk to him. But my grant request for the second installment of this year's grant to fund the preschool has been approved by the Community Foundation Board. And so Phil will be here at the February Board Meeting to present us with the, the check to help fund the, the second half of the school year and also provide the board and community with an update and answer any questions. So looking forward to Phil being here at next month's meeting. Moving on to finance and personnel, stanleysaferschools.com. For those of you that got tired of seeing my daily tweets and Facebook prompts to text and vote and do all those things, I appreciate you having fun with that and, and playing along. It was all for a good cause. The winner, according to the website, stanleysaferschools.com, is a school called Faith Christian School. I believe they're out of Arkansas. And they won the $200,000. And so congratulations to them and thanks to everyone in our community who helped to vote daily in that effort. We still have two good used buses for sale. They are advertised on Craigslist for $4,750 and $4,250. I advertised these at those prices after I consulted Craigslist and other used bus sale companies and found that a price of about $3,000 to $7,000 was pretty typical for a bus in that, in that vintage and with, or of that vintage and with about those miles, anywhere between 110 and 130,000. I, I just still am struggling to take a bid of, of, of $1,500 for a bus that runs well. And since we're not in a rush and these buses are still in service and on the road and driving athletic events and serviceable, I think we can hold out. I have had a call from the superintendent, Paulston, who said she has some interest and she's looking for used buses. So we could very well be selling these in the near future. I will keep you posted. If you've been listening to radio or, or local TV or looking at any of the, the governor's state budget consensus estimates, we have a bit of good news economically for, for once in the state. It looks like things have turned around. Estimates right now of about a $900 million budget surplus are coming, are coming online. Really, this is a result of two things. The wind down of the Michigan business tax, that is sunsetting, and better than projected tax revenues have combined to, so I'm, right now, they're not 100% sure, somewhere between 880 and 900 million dollars. State is facing this, this surplus and legislators are already talking about tax cuts heading into election year. But school business officials, superintendents and other school, public school officials are lobbying for return of some of the surplus funds to the school aid fund in the form of a per pupil increase. We have been cut over the last four years, over $500 per pupil. One was in the form of a $470 per pupil cut. And then there were increases to the retirement rate and healthcare. So the resulting burden on local districts with regards to per pupil funding, that burden's gone up. So this opportunity exists now for us to state our case about how this can help public schools. This would allow, if we get into this money as a public school district and across the state, us to offset these retirement costs and healthcare costs and other things. We're all predicting business officials especially to know more about where the governor is focusing. And we expect a strong focus on, on K-3 and pre-K-3 early childhood education as well as career tech ed. We're hearing that he's going to speak a lot about putting some money into career tech ed initiatives across the state with regards to public schools. So we'll keep our eyes on the budget.
And Ben, it's still so early. I mean, I think it'd be the pessimist here, but having been a state employee before, it's early.
It is very early.
And you just don't know what's going to happen. So I guess as a board member, I, I would comment to say that this is exciting, but I would not-
Oh, no, don't count your-
Use this ever to make any decisions.
Don't count your chickens.
We don't have.
And, and typically, this governor's been quite good about getting his budget done on time with regards to others who have not made their deadlines. Governor Snyder has done a much better job about tying off the budget. The projections for this year are early May instead of late May, which really helps.
And the numbers are probably, I'm talking more about decisions.
Right.
About what's going to happen.
And we all know that there's a strong lobby for, for the roads commission to improve roads. And I agree because the potholes are pretty horrendous depending on where you go. So, no, you're right. There will be a lot of folks who want a piece of this pot, for sure. Technology updates. Steve worked diligently before the break and over the, the winter break with ISD staff. In a nutshell, and Steve, if I misstate any of this, feel free to jump in. But in a nutshell, Steve, before the break, was in a position of having to manually move files from one power school server to another, almost on a daily or weekly basis because we had maxed out our server space. We, meaning the ISD. Char-MISD hosts Power School for all 11 school districts and they provide that to us at no cost. To host Power School yourself is pretty expensive, as we found out. We did explore that because we were getting frustrated at the fact that we were not able to do regular updates. And as we're getting towards the end of a semester, storing critical cumulative data for high school students with respects to grades, credits earned, credits earned and all those things, that's instrumental to what we do. We must have that program working. So I lobbied pretty heavily with their assistant superintendent and Steve worked diligently with their tech staff. And at no cost to us, we did achieve much more server space. They recognized our problems, probably one that other districts will be facing. And so they moved us to a more robust Power School server. And Steve said it is noticeably faster. I'm not a teacher entering grades, but Cindy, I, I'm assuming you work at Power School on purpose?
It is so much nicer.
Good.
Oh, yeah. I could go and do other things and come back before it would actually come up with a report that I would need or even just do an attendance at the end of the day. So, yeah, it's running pretty nice now.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate your work on that. And along the lines of tech, we do have a new four-to-gay firewall that's been installed. The other one failed and so they sent us a replacement. Steve has reconfigured or configured the new one, I should say. And that is up and running. And this is the first step in the process to make sure we have this, this system operational for Steve to set on the tiered access for student, staff and guest users. So Steve's been very busy and I appreciate your work over the break. Thank you much. Buildings and grounds.
Hey, Ben, can I ask a technology question?
Sure.
And I apologize if this came up at another meeting, but how are the teacher iPads going? I was, Shelley probably.
They're, they're, like, they love them.
Are they, they're getting a lot of use?
They're using a lot, yeah. Yeah, no, I want them for the kids.
Not all, not every kid, but I've heard they want, like, sets of four and five to work with. Yeah. It would be nice if we had somebody who was using that, using it, you know, getting a lot out of it. Come in and kind of show us.
Sure. And, and they did, um, Sarah, or the van teacher, yeah, came in and showed us. But she was doing, and I think Pam Beckering used her.
Yep.
When she came in, I mean, so there was, yeah, it was, it was cool. We should have put that in the minutes.
What Shelley's done also is kind of at the front end of, I think you've done this in, I don't know if it was a K-12 meeting or if it was just in one of the buildings, but given an opportunity for staff to share, like, a tech tidbit or an iPad trick and stuff like that. So trying to have opportunities within each faculty meeting for, for, you know, kind of, kind of teachers to teach the teacher. These are the experts who are working, you know, moves on the ground. Right, right. And much better than-
Candice offered the Google Docs training last week.
And so we've seen teachers having some professional development for other teachers in the district and kind of showing one another how to get more, get more bang for the buck, so to speak. Buildings and grounds updates. The boiler circuit board failed, as I reported to the board in, in an email. But thanks to West Climate Control, we were not forced to cancel another day of school last week. We were pretty nervous, though, with the temperature and the negatives and no heat in the elementary. We were afraid of, about breaking pipes. But thanks to Vern and the tech from West Climate Control that stayed early about six or seven o'clock at night, he hardwired two of the six boilers. Basically, we have six, two are running presently. The building is horrible. In some rooms, it's about 80 if you don't open the windows. If you see windows propped, it's okay. We have boilers running nonstop until the new circuit board arrives. But the good news is the system's heating the building quite well. It's just we can't regulate it. So as soon as the circuit board arrives, hopefully in a day or two, we will have the system back up and running appropriately. But really excited. We didn't have to go four or five days without heat. Lighting issues investigated. This was something I reported on or actually someone brought to my attention, I believe, either just on the tail end of last meeting or out in the hall. And I can't, I apologize, I can't remember who brought this up. But, do you remember, Cindy?
I don't, I wasn't here the last week.
Someone said that after a basketball game.
I think it was Rob.
It may have been, it may have been Rob. An elderly individual was, was leaving, going down towards the street and the curb and those four or five steps outside were really, really dark. And I thought, well, gosh, that exterior light must have burned out. So Vern and I went out there, looked at it. I believe we have a, a double bulb burnout. We had, we do have an exterior light that isn't functioning. And there's also a street lamp, right, over those steps. And I'm not sure if that's either burning out or not on. I'll check it tonight as I go. But Vern has called the utility company to come check that light, make sure the lumens, the lumens are correct and replace the bulb. And then we'll have our bulb replaced as well. So I want to make sure we've got that taken care of. Other than that, the building and grounds are, are in great shape. And so that concludes my report.
That was good, Ben. I know, I'm impressed. I do, I, I have some old notes that popped up. And, you know, we talked about the value of use knowledge that we make for each other. And so a couple of things showed up that I guess I'll ask about from a previous meeting. One of them was something Betsy asked and then another point I asked. And I had asked about, this was when we were in the little chairs in the kindergarten room, about the idea of recognizing, I mean, it's nice, all of us getting recognized tonight, but I brought up recognizing some parent volunteers. As a board member, I would love to bring a parent in here, for example, that has done so much over the years and give them some sort of recognition and thank you. And I can think of a couple of people off the top of my head that I would nominate for something.
We had a really nice volunteer appreciation dinner.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's Cindy, if, if you've ever got done in the past for parents or, you say that?
It used to be done at the end of the school year, when, at the elementary school, at least when I was a real active volunteer. They recognized the parents at the end of the school year when they recognized the students the last day of school.
And that's an option, too.
We would get a certificate.
I would just love to see that again, something like that.
And I think at one time, when my boys were little, they, and I was not a PTL, we would recognize them as a PTL members.
Okay, so there are some different values that could be used, but, but.
And unless I'm just-
But I think of these couple of people in my head, I just wish there was something the school as a whole could do to say, oh, my gosh, you've done so much over the years, so.
We had about 28 people at the volunteer appreciation dinner and I know that, that-
Oh, so we do have a dinner?
We already have had the dinner.
Okay.
We did, when did we do that, September?
No, I'm just saying it was October.
It was October.
And what, what I did is I sent, kind of on the heels of that meeting, I sent out a list to the staff and said, or sent an email to staff as a Google Doc and said, please give me the, the names of your top two volunteers who are instrumental, whether it's stuffing Friday folders, coming in, being guests, maybe doing, doing all these things. And so the list grew from about 14 to about 18, about 22. And finally, we had 28, well, we had about 36 people on the list. And we invited all of them. We had a nice dinner in the cafeteria. Like, 28 came, we took a group photo.
Okay, so that's kind of, that's an annual event.
Had certificates, had a great time and it was a lot of fun. We had, we had-
Good food?
We had-
Good food.
Good food.
So you were there.
Good gathering. And it was nice.
All right, so that might be a good thing, too. And if board members get invited to that and were able to shake their hands and say, thank you, too.
It was very nicely done there.
It was really nice.
Yeah. The other thing on here I see is Betsy had asked about the graduation date. I wonder if anything's happened with that, being that it's always been on Memorial Weekend. She had said, would there ever be consideration of a change? And it says Shelley and Ben may look for feedback from teachers in the public to see if that would ever be of any interest to anyone to make a change on it. Was there ever any discussion with that or?
I don't, I don't think at that time there was because we typically will start looking at the calendar as we, as we get to the close of the year, which is in the springtime. The EA and I'll sit down and look at calendar and calendar.
And I can't say what people's opinion would be. I just noted, noted that Betsy had asked about that.
I know, I think, I've heard feedback on both sides. I've heard folks that are concerned that, you know, it limits them, obviously, on the long weekend. I've heard other folks say it's fantastic for folks coming in from out of state for graduation. So it just depends.
Okay, that's all that's on there right now. Let's see, I'll pull another one up.
Well, it's good to have a follow-through on those things. A lot of times we discuss things and then that's the end of it. We never hear anything. We never know what, what actually has happened, if anything. So thank you for-
I did, I did think of one more thing real quick, Michelle, is that I did have a teacher, a couple of teachers ask me at one point if we were going to post any minutes. And I think they were referring to our formal minutes, posting those on the website. And I don't know if we've ever done that or, I don't do that.
We've never done that.
We sure could, but I don't know that we have.
Post them on there.
Yeah, and I haven't heard anything in a long time. That was quite a while ago where they said, would you ever post the minutes? Now, I know these ones that I take, we kind of determine that those were kind of our informal board minutes for us to come back to and do things like I just did.
And I know, as when I was on the EA, part of my job, whatever, being on the EA was to come to every board meeting. And so I always took notes. I don't know if that's still something that, that they do. And then my job was then to go back to them and say, this is what they talked about before my job.
And actually, the teacher would ask me when somebody knew.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it makes sense.
Yeah, that was part of, Bridgette and I actually alternated at that point. And that's been probably four years, three years.
A long ago when the earth was young and I used to do this. They did send a copy of, you know, a paper copy of the minutes to every teacher. Put them in their mailboxes the next morning or two days later.
Okay.
Whoever actually took the notes, you mean? The board or the EA?
It was the official board.
Okay.
The official board minutes went to each teacher in their mailbox. That was before.
That was before mine.
I've been here for years.
And I, I, I could ask, you know, I could ask Michelle or whatever and see if that's, if she's happy with how it is or if she would like to see hard copies and-
Right. The hard copy was nice because people would take it out of their box. They'd sit and look at it and at lunchtime and sit and talk about what had gone on.
Okay, so I can follow up on that.
Did they, did they lag a month in arrears because the minutes aren't generated and adopted until the following month?
See, I don't know that version. The version that we did, we just took them immediately to the, well-
The notes you took?
The notes that we took went, you know, immediately and then we had our CLEA the next week. So they were shared that way.
And I know the EA always sends a rep to every meeting and have, you know, been doing very nice. It sounds like it was just two of you back in the day.
It was, we just kind of rotated.
I think the EA now has, you know, I don't know if you've divided it up. Everybody has a meeting that they go to or?
She just sent an email out and said, can someone go? So.
Here you are.
Yeah, I'm taking the notes tomorrow for tomorrow's.
Good. And you, you always have the EA meeting the Tuesday after the board meeting?
Right, right, yeah.
You've taken the notes, okay?
I'll just send a quick email to her. I mean, I don't want to create more work for myself, but I just know it was brought up, so I'm not really buying it. And I, I don't need to bring another thing up, it's because I've been gone. But I know there's probably still that interest in teachers having those, like, breakfasts or luncheons from a couple of board members. Did any of those get accomplished over the last few months? Okay, I know there was, there wasn't a lot of, I didn't see a lot of communication coming from Tim or anybody. I think there's still that interest, so, so at some point or else, if you want to send an email to Tim or Michelle or, and ask if they'd still like to do that. And they were kind of modeling that off, I think it was at Potaski Schools, where they have something like that. And it's, it's worked well for communication as well, so.
I'd just like to update on the, trying to get the volunteers and so forth then to that high school. A tough prospect. I had talked to both, both the special ed teachers, Kim and Carrie, and asked them for feedback. And they said, you know, during, not so much during the seminar time, but they both have, like, two-hour blocks, I think of when they have kids. And they said, anybody, anytime during that. The problem has been finding people to come in and help. So we're not, we have not forgotten about it, but it's just-